All right, um, here's the agenda, Mr. Bova. I think we're ready for you to start.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Seven oh five, let's call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we have approval of the agenda.
Some of.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Hey, should we state our name before we vote? I think we did last time.
Good.
I think that would be best. It makes a little bit easier.
Okay.
Oh my.
That makes sense. I was kind of passing over that on these.
Yeah.
I just lost everybody.
We can still see you.
Really? Well, that's good.
Yep. All right, so from here on, we'll state our name before we vote. Next, we have public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. We will not be able to respond to your questions at this time. The purpose of this session is for us to listen to you and give you the opportunity to share with us. Per policy, BDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings, the following guideline procedures will be followed. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. And I would add, in instances of virtual meetings, you can contact me via email, and I do not have any emails. Next, we have report of the superintendent.
Yes, well, good evening, evening, everyone. I'm going to switch to this report. I hope you're all staying warm and safe and getting ready for some more snow. Tonight, we'll start my report with notes of appreciation. They are located in your board packet, and I believe there are three notes in there this time. The second item is to look at enrollment counts. We just submitted the last Wednesday and January count to DUCY, and so I'll just do some quick comparisons. The first day of school this year, we had one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine students. When we did our September count, we were down three. And here at our January count, we had one thousand seven hundred and fifty-three. So that means we're down about twenty-three students. Not too surprising. We've had quite a few this year. The parents have made the decision along the way to homeschool their child because of the COVID- nineteen pandemic. But when you compare two thousand nineteen, twenty to two thousand twenty, twenty-one, you see that we're down about seventy-three students. Again, a lot of parents chose to take their children to homeschool. We also had quite a few parents this year, not a significant number, but quite a few parents who made the decision for their kindergarten child to go ahead and wait at least one more year before they sent them. So we do expect our kindergarten numbers to go up this year. So I think we can definitely see from our January enrollment count in particular that the pandemic is having an effect on our enrollment. Then if we look, but if we look at our pre-K enrollment, the first day of school, we had fifty-six students. We went up four in our September count, and then we went up twelve in our January count. And we're up one student this year as compared to last year. But this is something, when I showed you the September number, it continues to grow. Throughout the school years, we find more and more students who need services. So in our early childhood special education program. So, you know, we're real excited and proud of those numbers, are concerned about what we're seeing with the pandemic. So that is the enrollment summary. Does anyone have any questions before I move on? I'm seeing a bunch of head and nose. Okay.
Mister, there might need to be unmuted. He'd sent me a note.
Who?
If he can find, Jim.
Let me see where's.
I've lost everything. I don't have an agenda or any, anything anymore.
I think the only thing I can do, Bailey, is to ask him to unmute.
Okay, I will let him know and see if we can figure out if he can see that on his.
I guess if he has a question, can he put it in the chat?
Yes, I will mention that to him, too.
Oh, he's, Jim, you're unmuted now.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay. Okay. Did you have a question, or were you just trying to unmute?
I tried to unmute.
Okay. All right. Then I will go ahead and go on to kindergarten registration. St. John Elementary has their kindergarten registration scheduled for Saturday, March sixth, starting at eight AM and running until approximately noon. Bloomsdale Elementary is Saturday, March twenty-seventh, again, from eight AM till, until approximately noon. If you need to schedule an appointment for your child, we started taking appointments on February eighth. So go ahead and just call the elementary office where your child would attend school. And they're answering phones right now because we are doing virtual instruction. And they can set your child up with an appointment. Any questions on kindergarten registrations?
Nope.
All right. I went ahead and canceled the principal's report for this month, or yes, for this month, because today the principals were pretty busy taking care of our virtual instruction day. From everything I heard, there were a few bumps, but overall, the teachers and the building principals were very happy and pleased at how everything went. I will encourage any parent out there who experienced any problems or needs some assistance to call us. Email your child's teacher, call your child's building. Our tech department is open and operating. Just call us and we will try to help you get the answers that you need to make sure your child can do his or her work. And then safety reports, I do not believe there are any in your packet this month. We've had to cancel and reschedule several because of the wonderful weather that we're experiencing. And before we move on, I want to remind everybody one more time that it is Missouri School Board Member Recognition Week. It's actually this week, February fourteenth through the twentieth. Just want to thank the board members for everything they do. I'm very proud to work with all of you and appreciate all the hard work and everything that you do for our district and our kids. So, thank you. And, Mr. Bova, that is the end of my report.
Well, thank you, too, and thanks to all the other board members. It's a tremendous board, so I appreciate it very much. Dr. Fliege, I didn't know if you had time to answer maybe one question. We had talked about this board possibly adopting a resolution to send to the legislature about a certain bill, but we are not going to do that. I just wanted to bring it to the public's attention that there are several bills out there to expand charter schools, to expand for-profit charter schools, to establish educational savings accounts, which are really just using public tax dollars to go to a private school. And there's also some bills out there to change school board elections to the November election instead of the April election. And anyone else, please feel free to speak up, but I think this board is fairly united against those bills. Those bills could hurt public schools. Nothing against charter schools or private schools or parochial schools. Just would like to see public school dollars go to public schools.
Well, and I will also add the one particular bill that we're talking about. It's Senate Bill fifty-five. It also has a provision in it for basically homeschool children and children who attend public schools and participate in athletes to have different standards. There would be no academic requirement or no attendance requirement on a homeschooled child, whereas a child attending public school would be required to meet the academic requirement. But it creates a double standard that just isn't fair to kids in general. So that is also part of the bill that we're talking about.
Yeah, and for anyone who's watching who doesn't know, though, some of those bills in different fashions would take public tax dollars and allow that money to be spent, like I said, at private or parochial schools, and then some charters that are for profit. So again, I don't think the board is against charter schools at all, as long as they're sponsored by local school boards, and we obviously have no need for that here. But if you want any other information, please feel free to find one of us, or if you are in agreement, feel free to contact Senator Elaine Gannon or Representative Dale Wright and let them know that. Thank you.
Yes, I was going to say there are similar bills in the House, too. So, yes, contacting Representative Wright would be appropriate and necessary also. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Bova.
Thank you. That's the end of your report. We're on to unfinished business, school calendar for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. I think I have these backwards, so I'm going to go here for a minute. Hang on just a second. Okay, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. This is for next school year. As you will see, the first day of school in this calendar would be Monday, August twenty-third. We set the Misha dead period for activities for the summer of two thousand twenty-one back in August of two thousand twenty. And so that dead period will run July thirty-first through August eighth. Again, the first day of school here on August twenty-third. No school on Friday, September third. This will be a professional development day for all employees. And then Monday, September sixth, would be the Labor Day holiday. That would bring us here to October twenty-eighth, where we would have a half-day of school, do parent-teacher conferences that evening, and then there would be no school on October twenty-ninth. When we move to November, November eleventh is our Veterans Day holiday, so there would be no school. November twenty-fourth, we would have a half-day of school and then be off November twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth for Thanksgiving holiday. Then we move to December, Christmas break. We would have a half-day on December twenty-second, and it would begin on that day, the twenty-second, and run through January sixth, and I'll come back to that in just a second. Ending on December twenty-second here allows us to hold at the middle school, high school, three days of final exams on December twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, which will allow us to end the semester here before we go on Christmas break. We received several comments along that line that in particular, middle school and high school teachers would prefer to do that if we could. It does create somewhat of a slight imbalance with eighty-two days in first semester and ninety days in second semester. But we don't think it's significant enough to really cause an issue. So we would recommend that we end first semester before we leave for Christmas break. So then we would come back from Christmas break on Thursday, January sixth. We would start second semester here. We would then have Monday, January seventeenth off for Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. We would go through February eighteenth, and this will be a professional development day. This is what we call our River Professional Development Event. And it is a professional development day with Jefferson R. Seven, Windsor, and Herculaneum. So our teachers will be able to get together to collaborate, to talk about lesson plannings and curriculum, and just create a time for them to network. So then we would be off on Monday, February twenty-first, first for President's Day. We would have a full professional development day on March eleventh with no school. If we look here in April, April thirteenth would be a half-day of school, and we would start Easter break and be off the fourteenth, fifteenth, eighteenth, and come back on the nineteenth. Then we would look at May twentieth as our last day of school with graduation on the twenty-first. We have built the following week, the five days, Monday through Friday, in as makeup days for students if we get inclement weather like we are this year. And then for this calendar, we did add these days onto the calendar for our employees to know that they are potential makeup contracted days for them, so that they have it on their calendars, and if we get into a situation where we have a lot of snow days, they know that they're going to have to work and make those days up. This calendar provides us with one thousand one hundred and eight hours, total hours of attendance. The state law requirement, the minimum attendance hours, is one thousand forty-four. So going those extra hours and having that extra time allows us to make up these five days. And then if we need to absorb some of the required sixty total hours that we make up and take them out of our total hours of attendance, we can do that without getting in trouble for not attending as many hours as we're supposed to. That ten forty-four is an important number, and so that's what we're trying to stay above, but we can do that in this calendar. We put it out on a survey for all of our employees, and I think there were fifty-eight comments, and of those fifty-eight comments, there was like forty or forty-one that basically said to the calendar committee that they did a great job, the calendar looked good, and people really seemed to be happy with it. So this is the calendar that I am presenting tonight for all of you to review, and, well, you've had it for a while to, to take action and approve. Does anyone have any questions?
No, no.
I think it looks good.
I am, you know, we have a great calendar committee. They work hard, they collaborate, they really get out there and do a really good job of trying to think through all the different scenarios for the different groups of employees that we have. So I'm really proud of the work that they do.
I got a question.
Yes.
So with this, kind of even for this year, with the snow days, with them going to the AMI, so are we, do we have to go and make up the days physically? Are we covering our track? How does all this work?
Well, our first five days, we promised our parents, our students, our employees, they were truly snow days. So we had five days. I think our fifth day was last Thursday. So Tuesday, today, was snow day number six. So today was our first day of AMI or virtual instruction. So we can count the attendance from the activities and the students' participation today. We can count up to a maximum of thirty-six hours in this method.
Okay. So this is. Do that next year, too?
Yes, this is new, this school year, DUCY or the state, I don't remember who approved it, and we're actually, this is, today was our first day ever trying to use it. So the feedback that we got is it went very well. Like I said, there were a few glitches here or there, but for the majority, the majority of our students were on and participating in the various activities.
Okay. Dr. Fliege, am I wrong in that the first five days, which we agreed to keep as traditional snow days, were also built into the year, so we do not make those up?
No, actually, the, the five snow days, and I'll, we'll see the current calendar in just a minute, but the first five snow days we make up in this week on that calendar. So I'll talk about our last day of school when we go over that calendar in a little bit. And we'll actually put an announcement out to our families after this calendar is approved, if I'm, if I remember right. Is that correct, Bailey? I don't know where you went. Is that correct? I was looking for, she's shaking her head, yes, so. I think we plan to do that tomorrow.
Yes, yes, I have an honor to do list to do that tomorrow.
Okay.
So this calendar for next year is the same way with the snow days, basically?
Yes, we would, we would guarantee five, you know, kids need snow days. It's important, especially when, you know, we actually get snow. But it's important for everyone to have a break and just to take a breather and truly enjoy a snow day, and kids go outside and play if you can, or just relax. So we think it's important, and snow days have great value, but we also know we need to, to continue learning. And so that's how we kind of structured it, and it seemed to work this school year.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion.
This is Joan Hook. I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two calendar as presented.
This is Martha Reese Singer. I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. I'm going to try to go through everybody without a list in front of me. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
David Bova, yes. Terry McDaniel?
Yes.
Joan Hook?
Yes.
Martha Reese Singer?
Yes.
Jim Kirshner?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
I see a thumbs up for Mr. Rudolph, so I think we're good.
Very well. Motion carries. All right, I believe next on the agenda is amend, nope, it's going to be the revision to two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar under new business.
All right, this recommendation is coming to you again from the calendar committee. They are unanimously proposing that we, we currently have March twelfth here on the calendar as a half-day of school with students for four and a half hours, and then staff members would have from one to three for professional development. Our employees in the committee are asking for this entire day to work on professional development, curriculum, instruction, assessments, virtual instruction. I think at some point, and Dr. Taylor can correct me if I'm wrong, at some point after the twelfth here, we will administer our spring in WEA to students in kindergarten through eighth grade, so that takes a little planning and a little time. And then here in April and May, we will also be administering grade-level assessments and, and of course, exams to our students. So we're asking for that day to work on instruction and to also talk about next year. Next year may look a little bit different, the way we have to structure some of our elementary classes in our buildings, so we just need a little bit of time. And so what that does is that reduces our total hour of attendance from one thousand one hundred and eight to one thousand one hundred and three point five. So we're still well above the ten forty-four. And then I will also, because it came up here, on this calendar, the last day of school was supposed to be here on May twenty-first, but since we've had the five snow days already, our last day of school will shift to May twenty-eighth. It is the Friday before Memorial Day. We're very happy about that. So that is going to happen, and like I said, Bailey and I will work on that communication and share that change out with parents and patrons and our employees tomorrow. But this recommendation is just to change this March twelfth half-day into a full day of professional development for our staff. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll move to approve the revision to, this is Eric Bosler, move to approve the revision to the two thousand twenty-one school calendar as presented.
Terry McDaniel, second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the revision to the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar. David Bova, yes. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Terry McDaniel?
Yes.
Joan Hook?
Yes.
Martha Reese Singer?
Yes.
Jim Kirshner?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph?
And I see, okay, yes, there you go.
All right, motion, motion carries. Next, we have the amended budget.
All right, I'm going to try something a little bit different, so bear with me. All right, so you all can see my screen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if I can move this out of the way. Okay, so we, I'm going to present this in a little bit different manner to actually show you some graphs and some things for the amended budget. This graph is basically all funds and a summary of the entire budget. So we have five years of data, so two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. So if we look here at the two thousand twenty-one budget, we see that our revenues, we're supposed to receive thirty-four point three million dollars. And those number, that number does include the five point three eight million dollars that you all, when you did the bond refunding earlier this year, and we saved the, all that money, that this is part of the revenue that you're seeing here, this five point three is from that bond refunding. But it gets paid right back out in our debt down here. So our expenses for this year are projected to be thirty-four point seven million, so that is going to leave us a deficit of about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That is much better than what we originally started a year off looking at. And I'm still very hopeful that we can balance it out and really come in at closer to a more balanced budget. So we're still looking at sources to help fund the things that we've had to buy, buy due to the pandemic. We're still looking at all of those revenue streams, too. What this graph also does, it provides you a summary of historically where our revenues come from. The majority of the revenues that St. John R. Two receives comes from local sources, so from our community, our taxes. Our second source of income is traditionally state sources, meaning the state formula and transportation. But you see here in two thousand eighteen, this green line, this, it's called non-current revenue. And then you see it here again this year. These were the two bond refundings. This was the six point eight million, and this is the five point three that we just did. So these are atypical and not really a source of funding. I mean, they're a source of savings in the end, but that's what that green line represents. Then if you look over here at our expenditures, all school districts in Missouri spend the largest amount of their money, their expenses, in salaries and benefits for our employees. So you see that here. The majority of our revenue goes to expenses for salaries for all of our employees. And then benefits follow and purchase services, you just kind of see how it compares out and it's pretty typical from year to year. But every once in a while, you get this long and short term debt like we've seen the past two years with those bond refundings. If you break it down even further, and you just want to look at this year's revenues, 60.6% of our, our money comes from local. I mean, if you want to get very specific, I mean, here it is. With 15.7 from the non-current, again, that's the boundary funding. This yellow is federal sources, so about 8.4% federal. The gray is 11.4, that's state, and this orange is 3.7. And we get a little bit of county money, not a lot. But again, you look over here at the expenses, 44%, this blue is salaries, 12% is benefits. Again, this is long and short term debt. This is a big payment for us, one of the largest we've had. The gray is purchased services, yellow supplies and materials. So that's just a quick look at the overall budget. I'm also going to break it down by fund for you and try to keep it pretty simple and kind of high level. So we'll just stick here with 2021. If you look at 2021, you see our total revenue is supposed to be about 13, 8, 13.8 million. And our total expenses are supposed to be about 10 point, we'll round up 10.5 million. So in theory, that should leave us a surplus of 3.3 million. But what we're going to do with that 3.3 million is we're going to transfer about 3.2 out to two other funds to cover those deficits. So the first one that we're going to make the largest transfer to is Fund Two, this is our teachers' fund. This fund is used to pay anyone who has a teaching certificate or a substitute certificate. So any of our aides who have, who hold a current and active sub certificate, they get paid out of this fund also. So if you look at the total revenue, it's about 12.6 million. We're supposed to expend 15.6, 15.7. So that's going to leave a deficit of $3,788. So Fund Two always has to end in a zero balance. So we're going to transfer this 3,007 or 3,7880. We're going to transfer that out of Fund One, put it in Fund Two and make sure we end in a zero balance here. This is just a quick summary of our debt service. Again, you see the $5.3 million coming in here as revenue. And then we're going to pay it out in this huge payment. And it's going to create a small deficit in this account, which we prepared, prepared for and we can handle. And then we look at our Fund Four, our last fund, our capital projects. Our revenue is about 92.92,663. Total expenditures right now is projected to be 288,000. And that'll create a deficit, not quite at 200,000, but again, we'll transfer those funds from Fund One into Fund Four. We try to always have an ending balance in our capital projects funded at about $500,000. So I know that's a lot of information, but I'm going to go back to the start because this is the important information. And that is that right now we're projecting that we're going to deficit spend about $388,000 in this year's budget. Lot of information.
It was good though. You had pointed out in the beginning, it was much better than the budget we adopted in July, which I believe was a $919,000 deficit. So that's a very good improvement.
That sounds correct. You know, when you work on budget, it's your best guess at that time. And as the school year goes along, we get more and more information and we know, okay, like for this year, we know right now there are withholds in our state payment. We know how much is being withheld. We know that our state revenue is lower than it's traditionally been because we're also receiving less of a transportation payment because there were cuts there too. So, you know, we're, it's just trying to, to make sure we come out in a good place. And Chris Ritter does an amazing job keeping an eye on all of this and alerting me when there's issues or there's things that we can do to offset, you know, an expense that we have to make with some revenue that may come in. So. And I also want to thank Bailey and Nancy. They spend a lot of time looking at grants and trying to find ways to also bring in some extra revenue for us. And of course, our career technical education teachers. Every year they're applying for 50/50 grants or 75/25 grants where we only pay 50% or 25% of those purchases for like new Apple computers, our equipment in our automotive program. That's a huge saving and a huge help and it gives our kids an advantage as they learn those career and technical education skillsets. So that is my presentation on the budget. Does anyone have any questions?
No, it was a good presentation.
Thank you. I'm, this is a new program and Chris and I are trying to learn it. And when we put the amended budget in and I, we got this back, we were like, oh, these are pretty cool. This makes it a lot easier to present, number one, and I think a lot easier for you to understand and for our patrons to see the big picture.
I was just going to say it makes it easier for us to understand. It really is. You did a good, you did a great job, you guys.
Thanks. Well, Chris deserves most of the credit. So make sure you thank her when you see her.
I will.
This is Jim Kerschner. I move to approve the amended budget for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
This is Martha Reese Singer. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended budget. David Bova, yes. Eric Bosler.
Yes.
Terry McDaniel.
Yes.
Joan Hook.
Yes.
Martha Reese Singer.
Yes.
Jim Kerschner.
Yes.
Richard Rudolph. Thumbs up. Got it. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda, we have CSET.
Yes, I will actually turn it over to Dr. Taylor. He's here.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good. This is our annual review of our comprehensive school improvement plan. We met on February 4th. And just to review a couple items, we remove any antiquated data that's no longer applicable. We try to keep about 10 years of data just for reference, so we can see where we've been and develop a plan for where we want to go. We look at updating the targets when it's applicable. And this year we added two major items to a variety of areas. One was the NWEA data analysis. Since we partnered with NWEA and began giving that test, we were originally, I believe, grades three through eight. And now we've expanded and we're K through eight. So we get quite a bit of data back. They're really good at analyzing that data and putting it together in reports. And so there were several places that we added that. We also added phonics instructions where applicable in grades K through two. We were lucky enough to get some phonics program, I believe it's called Really Great Reading. Our teachers are really happy with it and it addresses an area I believe that was challenging us a little bit. So just to go over a general overview, Goal One, we did add an action step to Strategy Four. We added Action Step Five. That's on page 16 if you're following along. I know it's a little difficult since we're all on computers and we don't have paper copies. So I'll just go ahead and talk about, this is where we added for ELA professional development, analyzing NWEA and phonics program data and using this information to seek professional development opportunities that will enhance ELA instruction. Then in math, professional development and Strategy Five, we added Action Step Four, which is basically the same action step that we added for ELA and analyzing that NWEA data in order to seek professional development that will enhance mathematics instruction. Goal Two, we had no major updates. Goal Three. Strategy 11, Action Step 11, we added, that's on page 26. I'll wait till Dr. Freegan catches up here. Yep, right there. Action Step 11, continue to partner with community counseling to provide onsite school-based counseling for identified students. Community counseling sends counselors to our campus to meet with students for a variety of reasons and is really a big benefit in allowing students to meet with them here. Parents don't have to come pick them up and take them to community counseling to me. They've missed less class, they're back in class much sooner than if they had to check out of school altogether. So they felt like, the committee felt like it was important to partner to, to put that in as an action step in this area as well. And then we didn't have any major updates in Goal Four or Goal Five. Now, when I say there's no major updates, the committee always does a great job in rewording things, finding things that need to be updated. So I guess to end, I want to really thank our committee members. You know, we meet at six o'clock in the evening, we invite parents, business owners, people in the community who are interested, really anybody can come and give input. We always have great input from anybody who attends. You know, administrators come, our teachers come, but we really appreciate the time that parents take out of their day to come in. And you know, at the middle school and high school level, students even attend. And we always get great insight because we're in it every day and I kind of give this spiel at the CSET meeting. As educators, we're in it every day and sometimes being in it every day, we get blinders on. And parents bringing an outside perspective in really allows us to open up our thinking and maybe think outside the box a little bit. They bring to the table things that we don't always see that make complete sense. So I want to thank all the committee members for all their input. Excuse me. We separate into groups and kind of jigsaw this out. They get to pick where they want to go. And then I get a master copy back of all their suggestions. I take the master copy and then update the CSET on my end. And that's what I'm presenting to you all this evening for your group. Are there any questions?
No, just thank you for all your hard work.
There's not any other questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
This is Eric Bosler. I will move to approve the revisions to the CSET plan as presented.
Terry McDaniel says yes, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the CSET plan as presented. David Bova, yes. Eric Bosler.
Yes.
Terry McDaniel.
Yes, again.
Joan Hook.
Yes.
Martha Reese Singer.
Yes.
Jim Kerschner.
Yes.
Richard Rudolph. A, okay. All right. I believe motion carries that we now go to action for a closed meeting.
Terry McDaniel, I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote following the regular open meeting on February 16, 2021 to be held in the RW Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, St. John R2 Missouri for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disbanding or promoting particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. I further move that notice of this meeting and its tentative agenda be posted as required below.
Eric Bosler, second.
Eric, roll call. Eric Bosler?
Yes.
Dave Bova, yes.
Yes.
Got you. Joan Hook?
Yes.
Jim Kerschner?
Yes.
Terry McDaniel, yes. Martha Reese Singer?
Yes.
Richard Rudolph? Did he give a thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
I don't have the video. Yes, motion carried, 7-0.
Next, we have motion to go to a closed session.
Someone.
Session with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.
Who did that?
That was Eric and I think Martha was going to grab the second.
Wasn't me, but it's okay.
No, I think it was.
I'll second it.
I think it was Mr. Kerschner.
Oh, Jim.
Eric Bosler will second it though.
You made the motion.
Set up. Jim and Eric.
There we go.
Got it?
Got it. JK and EB.
All right. Do I need to go through that individually, I guess? Dave Bova, yes. Eric Bosler.
Yes.
Jim Kerschner.
Yes.
Martha Reese Singer.
Yes.
Terry McDaniel.
Yes.
Joan Hook.
Yes.